Welcome to the 2015 candidate forum. For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm April Daniels with the Smithville Area Chamber of Commerce. We are sponsoring this event tonight and we are very happy that all of the candidates agree in paying. Thank you so much for coming. I know all of our candidates have worked hard to prepare for this forum. We hope that when you leave here tonight, you will have a good idea about who your local candidates are and where they stand on the issues presented. Thank you to everyone who submitted questions for the candidates. Please note, the candidates will be receiving copies of all questions submitted at the end of the forum. Additionally, this event is being recorded by the Smithville Public Library and we will have this entire event available on the website, smithvilletx.org, which is the Chamber of Commerce website. That will be up tomorrow, so anyone that was not able to see it or who wants to go back and review any of the candidates' answers, it will be up there on our website tomorrow. I'd like to thank J.W. Breeden and Breeden Productions for setting us up with sound for the evening. I'd also like to thank Gerald Morris for serving as our moderator. I'd like to start by introducing our candidates, who are seated in alphabetical order. And candidates, if you would please stand when I call your name, so the audience can see who you are. And if the audience would hold, refrain from applause until the end. For City Council Place Two, we have Ronnie Holt and Rhonda Yannick. And for City Council Place Three, we have Lynell Temez and William Gordon. Now you can applaud. This time, I would like to introduce our moderator for the evening, Gerald Morris, who will explain the rules and begin the proceedings.
Thank you, April. All of the candidates have been explained the rules prior to start this evening, but I will go back over for the audience. Each candidate will be asked to give an opening statement. They will have three minutes to answer this question. Then they will go down the list of the five questions that were submitted by the community, one at a time, one candidate at a time, and they will be given two minutes per question, per candidate. Finally, each candidate will be given three minutes for a closing statement. In the opening statement, we ask the candidates to address the following two questions. Why did you decide to run for City Council? And what are your qualifications to serve as a council member? Ms. Temez, three minutes.
Oh, thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. I decided to run for City Council again because I care a great deal about our community. I've lived here since, full-time since 2000, and I know that I still have some great things to offer our community. I've always made the decisions that I think are best for the citizens and the community. And great things are happening in Smithville right now, and they're going to get even better, and I want to continue to be a part of that. I have, my qualifications are that I've been on the City Council for the last eight years, and I have, in the past, run the Chamber of Commerce. I've been on the Fire Department. I've been Lions Club. I have been very, very involved in our community since, since I moved here full-time in 2000. Thank you.
First, I would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum, and a special thank you to each of you for taking time out of your busy schedule to attend tonight. A little about my background, on who I am and why I want to be your newest City Councilman. I've lived in Smithville for over thirty years. My husband, Ronald Yannick, owns RJ's Paint and Body and Hubels, which our son manages. I work as an agent for Farmers Insurance Company. My family's roots are deep here in Bastrop County. Both of my parents attended school in Bastrop, and we've had a home here since 1972. I raised my children here, and both of our children have married and are raising their families here. So I have a great interest and wanted to make sure that we don't ever lose the magic that is Smithville. I want to help ensure that the growth in our town is a controlled growth and that Smithville still retains its small-town charm. I'm a state-licensed risk manager and an insurance agent with over thirty years' experience in the insurance industry. Before going into business for myself, I was a vice president for ten years of a large company with multiple locations around the state. I manage a staff of over sixty people. I was also an elected representative for numerous agency advisory panels, both regional and national. As a business owner and a professional businesswoman with many years' experience in managing people and developing growth opportunities for a large agency, and with my risk-management background, I feel that I'm an excellent candidate for City Council. My business background allows me to be a problem solver, a quick thinker, and a team player. I believe that this position will allow me to utilize my extensive business skills to assist in guiding our town over the next several years. I'm a member of our local Chamber of Commerce, Moon Lions Club, Friends of the Library, and St. Paul's Catholic Church. I know in my heart that there are some wonderful opportunities for our town just around the corner that will bring soaringly jobs, new homes, and businesses, and I would like to be a part of that and still make sure that we keep Smithville, Smithville. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holt?
Good evening, again, thank all of you for being here tonight. My name is Ronnie Holt. Number one question that I've been asked is, am I from Smithville? And the question, and the answer is no, I'm not from Texas, but me and my family got here as fast as we could. We've been living in Texas for the last ten years. We're originally from Memphis, Tennessee. My wife and I have been a part of the Smithville community for about four years and have fallen in love with this beautiful place. I served as senior pastor for Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church in Smithville. I also worked at the University of Texas Chartered Schools, where I helped provide education to children who are unique learners. I decided to run for this office to do my part in serving the community that I live in. I have been a servant leader since the age of sixteen, leading committees. I am minister in Tennessee as well as here in Texas. As pastor of Mount Pilgrim Church, I have increased the church membership from just a few members to over two hundred in less than four years. And now I want to lead my community in improving the infrastructure and getting rid of drugs on our streets. I will be an active mission to our citizens' concerns and a voice that will represent all citizens in meeting and decisions that I will make as your next City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know your schedules are busy. First part of this question was, why did you decide to run for City Council? I decided to run for City Council to provide a clear voice for the entire community. I want to underline the entire community. I want to be a voice for those who feel excluded from the city government process. My vision of the future is one that embraces citizen input and participation in the problem-solving process of city government. In terms of background, I came to Smithville in 1948, so I think I have some of these guys out of distance. Graduated from Mary Brown in 1964, Mary Brown High School, earned a graduate science degree, and I was employed in the high-tech industry for over thirty years. That's right, I'm an older guy. And I came home to Smithville about five years ago. I came back to the original house in which I was reading, and I've never slept better in my whole life. In terms of other qualifications, I mentioned I have deep roots in the town of Smithville. I also have proven problem-solving skills derived from managing people and projects in the high-tech industry. And number three, I've taught at major universities where communication and transfer of ideas and knowledge is paramount. And with that, I'd like to be your next City Councilperson for Place Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Now for the first question from the community. For Ms. Temez, starting out, is what do you see as the major challenges facing Smithville, and how would you address or resolve them? Two minutes.
A lack of adequate housing is one of the biggest challenges facing Smithville. There are four levels of housing that are needed: single-family residents, rental properties such as single dwellings and apartments, affordable housing, and a retirement-style community with smaller homes and a community atmosphere. The best solution for now is exploring and taking advantage of vacant property opportunities that exist in our city, because we need to build from within before we build out. There have been fourteen houses built in the last year, which will add $2 million to our tax base in Smithville. Another big challenge in Smithville is the need for upgraded infrastructure. The city is currently working on three major infrastructure projects. We have been awarded the Economic Development Administration Wastewater and Water Grant, going from Highway 71 and American Legion Road all the way to River Bend Park, and will hook up to the Willow's Water Plant, which is the next phase in the annexation of the property for the city of Smithville. The Community Development Block Grant is sponsored by the Department of Agriculture, and that will be used to upgrade the water plant at the Dorothy Nichols Road. The Amoresco Utility Upgrade will switch all the water and electric meters to an automated system, which will be paid for by the savings to the city in more accurate utility readings. And I will encourage the exploration of even more grants. A third challenge is the need for jobs. We are striving to bring in more businesses that will provide citizens with job opportunities above minimum wage. Thank you.
Ms. Yannick, two minutes.
The issues that Smithville has before it are the same that many small towns are currently dealing with. After talking to our citizens, I hear the same things over and over. We need jobs. We need new restaurants. We need places to shop. If our residents have to go outside of our town to work, to shop, to eat, that means other towns are benefiting from those monies, and Smithville is missing out on funds to assist our aging infrastructure. We need to assist our local merchants by exploring ways to help them reach growth goals. We also need to work on offering an inviting atmosphere to entice new families and businesses to our town, thus we can keep some of those dollars here in town. We need planned, guided economic growth, one that benefits existing business owners and encourages other businesses to look at Smithville as a place to grow. Our Chamber of Commerce does a wonderful job of advertising all that Smithville has to offer. Now it is our job to help them by making Smithville a little more self-reliant and keep our dollars here. To do this, we must bring in new businesses, jobs, and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holt, two minutes.
I see two major challenges in Smithville: improving the infrastructure, such as better lighting, better streets, better drainage, and secondly, energy. What I hear most of complaints about is utility bills. And then, more than anything else, I hear about utility bills. So I will approach both issues with a proposal to acquire grants of funding to help us improve our infrastructure and also to provide education and incentives to our citizens who will make their homes energy-efficient with energy-efficient windows, doors, dishwashers, laundry washers and dryers, and so forth, which I believe will bring the citizens' utility costs down and also provide the city with the opportunity to buy less energy. So by doing this, it's a win-win situation for the citizens and for the citizens of you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, two minutes.
Okay. I just want to preface this a little bit. Lynell and I did not collaborate, but it seems like we have similar responses. So the first response is that we have lack of job growth in Smithville, which I think we all know. And in fact, the promise of jobs brought us by large firms has been a drumbeat of too many past elections. We hear this in elections as we go forward. This is unfair, a little bit mild. We should also consider development of locally owned and locally financed small businesses in addition to seeking out businesses that are out of town or far away. I would champion program design to retrain our residents with current job opportunities with an emphasis on jobs that allow residents to work from home or near home. Provide training and jobs in the call center industry is just one example, and there's been some talk about that. So training, soft businesses, I call them, ones that don't have a large footprint that would impact our community. So lack of job growth is number one. Number two, insufficient affordable family housing. And I think we all know that, that's why everybody's addressing it. I will work with the city and county to transform vacant lots, as we said before, into uninhabited homes into livable spaces. Excellent models abound to solutions that can be applied to our community. We can borrow from places like Habitat for Humanity. We can reach out to people like Joshua Douglas, who's one of our local builders, as well as Dartford, and use these as models for going forward for rehabilitation of vacant homes, affordable construction, and creation of new residences. Thank you.
Thank you. Community question number two for Ms. Temez, starting out. Many members of the Smithville community feel that there's a general lack of communication between the government and the citizens. How would you address this concern?
Since April of last year, the city has held a series of seven public forums to inform citizens about city projects, the city budget, and citizen concerns. I absolutely agree that there's a communication problem between government and citizens. And after giving some thought to this issue, I think there's a solution for Smithville. Every citizen in the city limits receives a city utility bill. So include a monthly newsletter with the bill. Put it on the city website and the city Facebook page as well. Include some photos of things that are taking place in the city, city things with infrastructure and businesses, things like that, to educate the people what's going on in Smithville. Our city website also has a budget infographic for an at-a-glance view of our budget and our spending. Come to the City Council meetings, which are open to the public the second Monday of every month. We would love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yannick, two minutes.
I must say, I'm a bit surprised at this question, as I myself have never experienced any difficulty in dealing with our local government, whether it was our chief of police, city manager, or mayor. I have had different times approached each of them and found them to be very open and receptive to my questions and concerns. I was always treated with respect, and all of my problems were addressed. Perhaps I didn't always get the answers I hoped for, but I did receive an answer. I would hope that if I'm elected, that all the members of our community would feel free to contact me if there's a problem, issue, or concern. I can guarantee a timely response. And I encourage anyone that feels that there's a lack of communication to just reach out to our members of city government. I'm sure that each and every one of them will be more than happy to discuss any issues. The last thing that they want is that information going out, and the best way to prevent that is to keep an open line of communication between our citizens and government officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holt, two minutes.
First of all, I believe that communication is, communication is the key to any relationship, even with government and citizens. I would address this issue by making citizens aware and promoting all of the communication outlets that the city is already providing to get information out to our citizens, such as the new city website, information with your utility bill every month, the Smithville Times, social media bill, the city's Facebook page. Also, I would encourage our citizens to take advantage of the monthly City Council meetings. And every spring and fall, there is a series of community informational meetings, as well as budget workshops, that the city manager has throughout the city at different venues. As your City Councilman, I will promote these outlets so that the citizens can take advantage of the lines of communication, and we can all be on the same page when it comes to what's going on in our city.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, two minutes.
Communication is inherently a two-way process in this context. To make city government responsive and carry out initiatives of its residents, residents must themselves participate in the functioning of government. What does this mean? Over the last few years, I've noticed that there are very few residents in attendance at most of our City Council meetings. That needs to be rectified. I maintain that it is time for us to avail ourselves of many discussions that the city has to offer. City government must develop creative means of informing the citizenry. For all of this to work, residents must be present and voice their concerns at City Council meetings, the workshops I would just describe before, and I would suggest that all these workshops should have all the City Council members attend as well. City government should be in the service of the community. We all know that. As such, city government should always strive to be as transparent as possible. And to this end, city government should disseminate information to the residents via, again, as been mentioned before, the city website, Facebook, email blast, and other printed materials for those who don't have access to the internet. Or as your next City Councilperson, you can contact me directly. My phone number and my email address is on the little cards that I'm passing out currently, so feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Community question number three. Currently, problems such as flooding, trailers in the street, trash, and unkept yards receive very little attention unless there is a complaint from the citizen. If elected, what would you do to take a more proactive role in addressing these problems? In the interest of mixing it up, we're going to start with Mr. Holt first on this question to his prepared. Two minutes.
I do know that currently, the school board has approved for the city to gain access to their retention pond and construction to put in a thousand-foot line for drain, which will start later this year. This will help us greatly extend the water around our community. As far as the trash and the unkept yards, I do know that there are already city ordinances to prevent these issues from happening. However, we only have one inspector to enforce these ordinances, as well as handling other duties assigned to him. I would proactively seek help by proposing we hire another inspector within our budget to help deal with the workload of these issues. However, the best defense we have against violators are the eyes of the community. So as your next City Councilman, I will seek help for an additional inspector, but I would also encourage our citizens to keep calling in violations so a work order can be created or issued and that the problem can be taken care of as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I must say that a number of citations are already being served by the city without complaint from citizens, as many are painfully aware. And I have to say, you can't be any more proactive than Ronnie Shulkey. He's doing his job. There are ordinances currently on the books that address many of the issues of unkept yards, trash, trailers in the street, flooding, et cetera. So it's just a matter of us making sure that the ordinances that are already on the books are enforced somewhat more. I would suggest, however, we could have a working committee consisting of both citizens and people who represent the City Council from all parts of town, and we should establish a long list of standing problem areas. We can't solve all the problems at once. I don't think we have the resources to do that, but we can prioritize them for immediate resolution of these problems in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yannick, two minutes.
Our city manager, Robert Tamble, does an excellent job in dealing with these issues as they are brought to his attention. I think he's been very responsive to complaints received at City Hall. Now, does that mean he can fix everything? Of course not. You have to remember that he is working with a limited number of staff and a limited budget. I do know that he and Jack Page and Chief Maturi work closely together to make sure the city staff do everything they possibly can to keep our city safe and clean. I've been to his office, and I've seen the numbers on his board showing how the complaints have decreased since he has taken over. If I am elected to the City Council, I would gladly take any issues you have to Mr. Tamble and work with him to obtain a resolution. But I do believe at this point that we're going to have to rely on the citizens to bring these things to the city's attention, and I do believe the city will be responsive. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Temez, two minutes.
I agree with the perception that citizens may think things are not being done. Our city code enforcement officer continually drives the town and sends fifteen to twenty letters a week for various code-up violations. If there's been no response after ten days, the city takes action to rectify the problem and charges the property owner. Many of the rental property owners live out of town, and that's a big problem. We are in the process of reviewing and revising city ordinances and codes, and we'll be strictly enforcing them. But you know, a lot of places are owned by elderly people who don't have the means or the ability to care for their property as they once did. So we need to pull together as a community and adopt these people. Contributing a couple of hours, one Saturday each month, would go a long way to making our community the best it could be. Thank you.
Community question number four for Mr. Gordon, starting out, is what is your outlook for the future of Smithville in five to ten years? And would you encourage or curb growth for large developments, i.e. big-box stores? Two minutes.
Okay. To that point, I envision Smithville in years to come as a thriving, bustling community that might grow to approximately 5,000 residents, and many of them new, and might expect that. It will continue to have a small-town character with a vibrant downtown with shops, small retail stores, restaurants, and many weekend activities, much like I remember from my childhood. Within the city limits, there would be light manufacturing, training facilities, not necessarily colleges, but training facilities, and soft, as I call them, soft jobs, not necessarily easy jobs, but soft jobs. And one example would be call center operations. I keep mentioning this because there is some interest on the part of outside entities in setup call center operations. I'd be careful about curbing business growth, however. I would say that business growth should be managed. For example, one might not want big-box stores, since we have many of them already in Bastrop in the Grange, that may be the perception of certain people. However, one would not have a standing position that actively opposes their location here. Above all, however, we want to retain our unique character while progressing with the business of developing business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holt, two minutes.
My outlook for Smithville for the next five to ten years are just simply bright. But however, I want what the citizens of Smithville want, because the citizens of Smithville in 2007 got together and made a comprehensive ten-year master plan that was revisited in 2011. We need to take a look and reevaluate how close we are to that plan that the citizens have already expressed that they want for the city. As we take a look at the plan, I would propose that we prioritize the items in that plan and begin to execute the master plan that the citizens say they want. I also would like to see us bring in new businesses to help improve our economic climate, but still keeping our small-town feel as most citizens have expressed. However, I feel there is still room for us to have a growing economy and not only bring in new businesses, but those businesses will also bring us jobs to Smithville and for our citizens. As close to half of our population living right at or below the poverty line, jobs are much needed for our citizens to get on their feet. We must afford opportunities not to just spend money in Smithville, but also to make money in Smithville.
Thank you. Ms. Yannick, two minutes.
This is a really tough question, but in all honesty, I have to say that for Smithville to survive, we will have to encourage growth. For years, I've heard people say, we don't want to be like Bastrop, we don't want all those big-box stores, but then I also hear people stating, we need jobs, we need something to do here. I want to find a balance, a way to keep the local charm of Smithville, but also grow our town. When I was having a discussion with a local Realtor, she told me the number of commercial buildings in this town sitting vacant. I was shocked. If we could just fill up one half of those buildings, just think of how that would help our town. In five to ten years, I hope that Smithville still has the same small-town feel where we know all of our neighbors, but also have new neighbors and some new businesses as well. I hope that as our children grow up and go to college, they will want to come back home to start their families, and I hope that we have jobs to offer to them. I hope that as our children graduate from high school and they choose to enter the workforce that there are jobs right here in Smithville that will allow them to provide for their families. That is my goal as your City Councilman, working to make Smithville that town.
Ms. Temez, two minutes.
Rumors in the past have been that city leaders have blocked Rumors in the past have been that city leaders have blocked big box stores or development, which is not true. Contrary to the rumors, the truth is that Smithville doesn't meet these big developers' minimum criteria of population, traffic counts, and so on. We are actively pursuing small business owners. Research shows that small business owners are the backbone of America. We want to preserve our small town by retaining our historic charm and capitalizing on tourism with our local assets like the Colorado River, our beautiful parks, Bisher State Park, Rocky Hill Ranch, and our skate park, to name a few, with multiple huge events that will draw people to Smithville. So instead of a box store, we want to be the box with mom and pop stores, to be a destination hotspot. You can go anywhere to find a Walmart. We want Smithville to have different and special places that people want to come to. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final community question of the evening, for Mr. Holt starting out, is what do you believe are the responsibilities of the city council with regard to economic development? For example, should the council create a mechanism for collecting funds for economic development efforts? Two minutes.
I believe that the responsibility of the city council should be to develop its debt for the city and its citizens. We must provide opportunities for our city to grow economically to help us operate our city at a surplus. Citizens have expressed that they want to grow economically, but want to keep a small-town feel. So let's do that by having control development. I would propose for us to try to develop Highway 71. The Department of Transportation came out with a report about a year ago that says between Houston and Austin, approximately eighty-five thousand cars travel the Highway 71. If we can bring in businesses along the highway to get some of those cars to stop and to spend money in Smithville, along with some of the beautiful signs that are now up and others to go appointing travelers downtown to shop Smithville. This way, we will have people contributing to our community economically and will keep our small-town feel. We also need to have representation at our county planning meetings that will also help us reach our goals for Smithville.
Thank you. Ms. Nez, two minutes.
Okay. We are currently researching how to form an economic development corporation. Many years ago, the citizens of Smithville voted down an economic development tax, and we've been trying to work around that ever since. We have the hotel-motel occupancy tax that can be used to promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry. The city, the Chamber of Commerce, and business owners are working together to promote Smithville and its businesses through advertising, such as billboards, internet, social media, written advertising, events, and more. We are not a financially rich town, but we have a lot of heart and spirit. And we will continue to work together to put our town on the map in a great way. The city, along with volunteers, stepped in and did some low-cost, high-impact projects like cleaning up the boat ramp, which is supposed to be maintained by L.C.R.A. And we have installed lights at the boat ramp, which has reduced crime down there. And now it's a great place to launch a boat and go fishing. Another low-cost, high-impact project that the city recently completed was striping Main Street, which is now making downtown look fresh and alive again. Everything we can do to make Smithville an inviting place is going to help economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, two minutes.
First, I would like to say those economic development efforts that we talked about in this question, they should be clearly defined before we start collecting funds. It's possible that we can employ volunteer resources and some aspects of the Chamber of Commerce to affect the mechanisms that we desire. Not every problem is solved by throwing money at it. City government should take a proactive role in promoting the best features of our community to potential businesses that are seeking to relocate or establish satellite facilities in a town such as ours. We are close to Austin. There are a number of companies that find themselves overcrowded in downtown Austin, many of which are actively seeking locations that are near Austin without being in Austin. We should identify likely corporate candidates. We should make appointments to visit and present to decision-makers. That's to say, we should be proactive, not wait for them to come. We built the town. We don't have to sit and wait for them to come. Let's go out and identify these candidates, talk to them, and how do we talk to them? We talk to them by preparing here, without major resources, canned PowerPoint and video presentations that extol the virtues of this town. Our proximity to Austin, our airport, and high-speed fiber-based internet comes to mind as distinguishing elements of such a presentation. That presentation should and must be done. Our unique resources should be taught to the companies in the major cities that surround us, not only Austin, but Houston and San Antonio as well. I'm a champion of tech-based companies since we're close to Austin, and the small footprint and low environmental impact that such companies would possess, I would find to be desirable.
Thank you. Ms. Yannick, two minutes.
I believe that the city council is responsible for encouraging new businesses as well as helping existing businesses. I do not believe that taxing our citizens to fund economic development is the answer. The Chamber of Commerce has in place an economic development committee, and the city has on staff a grant writer that has obtained extensive funds for the city. These two entities are doing a very good job, and with a strong and proactive city council, I see no need for additional monies to fund another entity. I believe that if the city council works together, that we can actually proactively bring new businesses to this town of a desirable sort. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, each candidate will be given three minutes to make a closing statement. We'll start with Ms. Nez. Three minutes.
I've been a council member for eight years, and I've always done my best to make decisions that will best serve the community. Every single person that lives here is an investor in our community, and your opinion matters. We all have something to contribute, to give back to our community. So bring your skill set forward, and let's go with it. Let's pull together to make our community the best it can be, because when we all work together, we can do great things for our town. Thank you all for coming tonight and participating in the political process. I have to pass along our city manager's slogan, "Stay informed, get involved, and make a difference." Good things are coming to this community, and we all want to be a part of it. Please vote to reelect me, and we will continue to move forward with the awesome plans for smart growth in Smithville. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yannick, three minutes.
I just want to say thank you again to all of you in attendance tonight, and thank you to Daryl Morris for being our moderator, and a special thank you to April Daniels and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this important event. I'm happy to see so much participation in this year's municipal elections. I hope the community stays interested after the elections and that the seats are full each month in the council chambers. I want to humbly ask for your vote this election. Be sure to vote early. The next few years will be even more exciting for Smithville, and I'm looking forward to being a part of it. Please vote for me, Rhonda Yannick, Place Two, City Council. Thank you all, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Holt, three minutes.
I want to be your next city councilman so that I can help lead our community to be even better, even better place than it is already. We must confront drugs on our streets. I want to give the chief my support as he fights to keep our streets safe. I know that the city has purchased a new drug dog, a police department, and they take steps to get rid of it and keep it in our safe. And then there's the infrastructure. Great strides have been made thus far to improve the infrastructure. As your city councilman, I will continue to push for what the citizens want to see happen in our community, such as our parks, getting new equipment, river accesses, less pop holes in our streets, John and affordable housing. I will work closely with the mayor, the other city councilman, and the city manager as a team to create the best opportunities for our city to prosper without being a burden to our citizens. Shortly after my arrival here in Smithville, the Bastrop fires happened in 2011. I have never seen a community pull together to help people like I saw the city of Smithville do, volunteering their time to do whatever needed to be done to help their neighbors. I was blown away. And the support that this community provided to one another during such a tragic time, that's why I'm here. I'm here because I love this community and the people in it. My name is Ronnie Holt, and I humbly ask for your vote to be your next city councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, three minutes.
What can I offer voters? I can provide effective, transparent, and forward-looking representation and leadership from residents of Smithville. I will spearhead a team effort to steer Smithville in directions that create more jobs, local business investment, hope, progress in the community involved. Number two, my engineering-based problem-solving skills derived from many years in industry allow me to provide another dimension and perspective in the city revitalization process. Number three, as a team player, I can and do work with all citizens of Smithville to enhance our community regardless of differences of opinions or viewpoints. In fact, I notice a number of my friends are sitting in the audience right now. I believe in working with all who bring value to the debates regarding our future direction. So with that in mind, thank you in advance for your supportive confidence. Please cast your vote on May ninth or earlier to Bill Gordon, Place Three, Smithville City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes the questions. I'll turn it back over to April.
I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming out tonight and participating, and thank you. It was obvious that you worked really hard on those answers, and we appreciate that very much. I'd like to thank you all in the audience for coming out and becoming informed about our candidates here tonight. I want to remind you that the Smithville Public Library has come out tonight and is recording this event, which will be available at smithvilltx.org. And I'm sure we can have a link of that on the city website as well, so there'll be plenty of ways to get access to that. I'd like again to thank the candidates, and I'd ask you all to please give them a round of applause.